Good evening. I will now call to order the special council meeting for March 22nd on prevailing wage. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien. Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. All right. We are here to discuss a proposal by three council members on prevailing wage. We have six in-person speakers, so I will go ahead and begin with them. Thank you for your patience. We'll begin with Fred Yamashita, followed by Tom Dunn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Fred Yamashita. I'm the Executive Director of the Arizona AFL-CIO. I'm here to speak in favor of the prevailing wage ordinance for the city of Phoenix. We represent here 160,000 workers across the state of Arizona. These are members of the AFL-CIO, but we advocate for workers all across the state, all workers. And I feel that there's always the right time to do the right thing. And this is that time. This is an issue that's been discussed before, and I know that both sides have expressed their concerns. But this is also an issue that's going to be great for the city of Phoenix. It's going to be great for the economy of the city of Phoenix, and it's going to be great for workers all across the state. It will create a level playing field for contractors that want to do the right thing, that play by the rules, that treat their workers with dignity and respect, and pay them a fair wage. This is something that has been a long time coming, and tonight I hope you will support the workers of Arizona. Thank you.
Good morning.
Tom is next, followed by Luke Douglas.
Good morning. Sorry. Whoa. All right. My name is Tom Dunn. I'm President of the Arizona Builders Alliance. We're the alliance of the Associate General Contractors Building Division, as well as the Associate Builders and Contractors. So we represent not only general contractors, but subcontractors, specialty contractors, on the vertical side of building. So, and in the state of Arizona, we have about 325 member companies, and we represent about 25,000 workers plus. We're a very diverse group. And so that's the concern that we have with this is that we have large contractors, we have small mom and pop shops, and this disproportionately damages, prevailing wage damages the smaller mom and pop shops that don't have the ability to staff and compete with the larger groups. Another concern we have is the process of this item being placed 24 hours ago. There's significant issues. We just heard six hours plus of affordable housing issues. And this is something that we should all discuss as stakeholders with respect to how it affects, how prevailing wage affects the affordability of housing. So it does increase the cost, that's known, and the various studies go from 6% to 30% increase. So that's something that we'd like to have further discussions on moving forward. You know, and since 1984, the voter-approved state law prohibits the requirement of prevailing wages. It's ARS 34321. So there will be legal challenges coming, I'm sure, if not from the Attorney General, from the private side of the businesses. Any questions for me? Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Luke is next, and Luke will be followed by Josh.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Luke Douglas. I live at Central and Baseline in the South Mountain neighborhood, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Arizona Building and Construction Trades Council. It's an exciting time to be a Phoenician. I can hardly go to or from my house without driving by construction or noticing the Phoenix skyline rise ever higher above the desert that we all call home. And as our community grows, we're facing a question that's perhaps a bit simpler than it may seem. Will this council support and provide for the workers who are building that skyline? Prevailing wage is a policy that has already been federal law for nearly a century. It requires contractors on government projects to pay their workers no less than the wage that prevails for their trade and in their geographic location. It's intended to prevent contractors from racing to the bottom on wages, then bringing workers in from out of town, winning contracts on a low bid, and leaving a community behind with depressed wages that will see little benefit from a project's construction. This ordinance would take the prevailing wage system that the U.S. Department of Labor already uses on federal government projects and apply it to city of Phoenix projects, and expressly carves out residential construction, meaning that it is separate from the issue of affordable housing. The city is authorized to enact this under the Municipal Minimum Wage Act that was approved by the voters of Arizona. And cities do have the authority to set minimum wages within their geographical boundaries. The issue here is that prevailing wage is simply a system of different minimum wages that are specified by trade. Prevailing wage incentivizes contractors to hire local, pay a livable wage, and keep the economic benefits of the project inside the community. It creates opportunities that encourage young people to pursue apprenticeships and skilled trades if they determine that a four-year degree might not be for them. And for thousands of Arizona families, construction is their path to the middle class. The Arizona Building and Construction Trades Council, composed of 14 affiliated labor unions and representing over 15,000 workers, would like you to support prevailing wage. Thank you.
Josh is next, followed by Solomon.
All right. Thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Gallego, for the chance to speak tonight, especially after such a long day. My name is Josh Humor. I'm the Executive Director of the Arizona Chapter of the American Subcontractors Association. I've been before you before on this very issue. Also here representing Arizonans for Fair Contracting, which is a coalition of subcontractor associations and individual companies that represent every trade in the industry, thousands of workers. And last, but certainly not least, Ricardo Carlo, who is the President of the Associated Minority Contractors of Arizona, was not able to be here tonight. He's asked me to issue the following statement. It will be a joint statement with us. We, just as we have before, oppose this ordinance. The reservations I've expressed earlier are all sort of still in effecting, including the reservations expressed by Mayor Gallego the last time we had a vote on this about the process. The stakeholder feedback and analysis has been wanting its best. I think Tom mentioned some legal concerns. And the evidence that we have says that moving forward with this would actually negatively impact the availability and affordability of housing. But that's actually not my primary focus tonight, because what I'd like to focus on is that our primary concern remains emerging small and minority contractors, who are the core of my membership at ASA and the core of the AMCA membership. And they're the ones that stand to be hurt the most by this. Efforts to impose these prevailing wage limit competition on public project bids, impose administrative burdens on smaller companies that may not have the bandwidth to comply but are otherwise qualified to perform these projects. So you've got legitimate, stable, safe, skilled contractors that are going to get shut out of the process. That's going to drive up the price of public projects, and that's not good for the taxpayer, and it's not good for small business people who are looking for opportunities. So in a challenging environment where they're facing a recession already, I would respectfully ask you to oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Solomon is next, followed by Jason, who will be our final speaker.
My name is Saul Magallanes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am a licensed journeyman in the state of Arizona. I am one of the contractors that stands the benefit from prevailing wages. We represent, I've worked in both construction and in construction education for some of the largest contractors in the state and some of the mom and pop shops that were just referenced, who are all responsible enough to pay prevailing wages and provide apprenticeships so that I own my skills and can take it to whatever contractor treats me appropriately and pays me appropriately for the skills that I own. All the stories that we heard earlier tonight are heart-wrenching, heart-wrenching. How many of them did we not have to hear if those people made a real living? Thank you.
Jason will be our final speaker.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Jason Sanks. I'm the Business Manager, Financial Secretary of Ironworkers Local 75 here in Phoenix, Arizona. We cover all of Arizona. That's our jurisdiction, so we work throughout the whole state. The last project I remember being on downtown Phoenix was in 2012, and that was down at the Court Tower, and that's the last project we did, Ironworker 75 did for the city. One of the major contractors building downtown, signatory to all the unions currently, decided not to go do this project with the union workers because of the fact that they had to bid lower. And when they did that, excluded the unions out of the question right there completely. So downtown was pretty much going to be, was built by people from out of town, is what happened. They weren't built by Arizonans. It was built by Texans. It still is being built by Texans. All that money goes to Texas, doesn't stay in Arizona, which is a big concern for me and should be a big concern for everybody else at this table. Today, we're dealing with issues of not having skilled and trained workforce. Everything in this resolution that is being put in front of you highlights what we are and what we do. Prevailing wage will allow our contractors to be able to bid downtown Phoenix and would be able to put our members to work, which is the middle-class workers. Phoenix, prevailing wage will allow our contractors to bid back down in Phoenix, and specifically in the areas, the towns that have this ordinance in right now. Prevailing wage is union wage and is a livable wage. Arizonans need to build Arizona, and prevailing wage helps prevent wage theft. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We'll go to councilmembers.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you. I motion to approve Item 1, the prevailing wage ordinance for city projects subject to the following changes. I will read my changes into the record and would like the final ordinance to reflect the accuracy of these changes. I also have a copy of these changes available for any of my council colleagues. I wish to strike the language in Section 43-52, definitions under covered employee, and replace it with the following. Covered employee means every worker, mechanic or other laborer employed by any contractor or subcontractor in the work of construction, alteration, improvement, repair, maintenance, or demolition on any city-owned or leased building, on any city-owned land, including any building subject to a giplit lease development agreement executed by the city after December 31st, 2023, or pursuant to a contract in excess of $250,000. Additionally, I would like to strike the current language in Section 43-52 subsidy and replace it with the following language. Subsidy means government property lease excise tax giplit agreements. This ordinance shall not apply to any development agreements between the city and a developer that does not provide for a giplit lease or that was executed by the city on or before December 31st, 2023. Finally, I would like to add a Section 43-59 entitled Exclusions to include the following. None of the provisions contained herein apply to any of the following. Number one, development agreements executed by the city on or before December 31st, 2023. Number two, public infrastructure reimbursement agreements between the city and private developers. Number three, any giplit development agreements between the city and a developer for affordable housing projects. Number four, any development agreement or other agreement between the city and a private person or entity involving the development, lease or ownership of exclusively residential units. This is a great step forward to give the non-union workers a fair and responsible wage when they work on city projects. I am thankful and will not pursue this any further with the general public.
Second.
Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support this motion, and I want to be very clear as to what it does. It strictly targets giplits and development agreements associated with giplits. It does not do anything with affordable housing or any type of housing, quite frankly. So with the language that we're zed by, Mrs. Guardado, it strictly targets those projects that receive corporate giveaways. Now, everyone knows how I feel about the giplits, that they're nothing more than corporate giveaways. I've opposed the stuff that goes on at the airport where millions and millions of dollars have been given to these large international companies. Likewise, these target those entities that receive corporate giveaways, taxpayer giveaways, I'm sorry. So I'm fully supportive of this. It's very clear. It's very clean. And one of the things that I'd like to bring up too, Mayor, is what's really happening in our country right now. And this is something that we need to start thinking about, not just as a city, but as a state and as a nation. If you look at what's happening with the Central Reserve Bank, and a lot of it relates to this, so I'll tie it together. And it's done by Republicans and Democrats together. It's a war on the working class. So the raising of these interest rates, and the central banks have said this, and I'm surprised that only a few political people picked up on this, is that they're trying to drive up unemployment, get white-collar and blue-collar people to lose their jobs in order to stem inflation. There are multiple ways to stem inflation, but this has been the policy of this country, and it's wrong. I think it does more damage to people, you know. They're literally targeting the working class in our country, and we have a much bigger issue coming at us right now. And we've got to find a way, and I actually agree with some of the senators on the Democrat side that think that Paul needs to be taken out, not taken out in that way, I mean, he needs to be fired, because he really does. I mean, this targeting of working class, and this is the lifeblood of our country. My father and mother were working-class people. My father was a union member. So I'm not, you know, I don't have fights with unions. I just don't do that unless I think that it's wrong. But at the end of the day, what we're seeing in this country right now is a targeting, and The Wall Street Journal actually came out with a story today of what I've been talking about for the last two months. Not that they heard it from me, but they actually caught on to that, too, that this is a war on the working class. And the working class is not just blue-collar, it's white-collar, too. So what we're seeing right now, Mayor, is a real problem in our country, and it's systemic. It's built into these individuals that don't have to worry about getting a job because they live in a cushy life, and they're the ones in charge of running our country. So it's not just Republicans and Democrats, even though it's right now a Democrat administration that's pushing this. It has been going on for years, and until we start turning the tide in this country, we're going to have a problem. So I'm fully supportive of what it is that Mrs. Guardado is pushing here. I believe it's good for the city of Phoenix. And to be very clear, she's not going to be moving this into the private sector. That's another critical component here. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to explain my vote today. You know, we voted on this policy about a year and a half ago, and I voted yes because I firmly believe that prevailing and competitive wages need to be prioritized in order to ensure that Arizona's growing economy can continue working for everyone, whether it's electricians or construction workers. Arizona is set to receive and already has received billions of dollars of investments, and billions more are on the way, whether that's TSMC, whether that's the Vestar project in my district. And our labor workforce, when they have to often work in the grueling summer heat, deserve dignified and competitive wages. In our upcoming budget cycle, we intend to provide much-needed raises to our city employees, and passing a prevailing wage in Phoenix will extend that investment for a strong workforce to our contracted labor and will help strengthen the middle class in this country. I also want to add that prevailing wage is already the standard for many of the projects that receive federal funding, and the Biden administration is incentivizing prevailing wages more than ever, and our entire city will benefit. I do want to say that I hear the concerns loud and clear that this ordinance was sent very late, and obviously, the rush nature is not ideal. I think with the limited time, we did our best, and appreciate Tom and Josh for coming out. I took every call that I received over the past 24 hours about this, and I'm grateful to my colleagues for addressing the concerns. I think Councilman DeCecio named the key ones, the ones around affordable housing projects. Historic preservation is another one. And in the case where the city enters into private, enters into, sorry, infrastructure reimbursement agreements with the city, those projects will not be affected by this. So grateful for that and grateful for the compromise that did take place in a very short period of time. So the most up-to-date language only applies to projects on city-owned land or non-residential projects that utilize a giplit. That means it will, again, not affect affordable housing projects, historic preservation projects, or these infrastructure development agreements. With those changes, I am comfortable and proud to vote in favor of this ordinance with the most recent changes presented. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I will not be supporting this. I think this is a terrible way to do public policy. I first saw this yesterday when a special meeting was called, and the first time I saw this very, very significant changes was just now. We should have a transparent process. We'll do better if we get more feedback. Two of my colleagues have said that we need a much more extensive process with extensive community involvement for our water rate hearings. To me, that same logic applies here. This could have very significant financial implications. And I do want to remind our colleagues, we do use giplit for affordable housing projects and to get more affordable housing in existing market rate projects. All right. Does anyone else wish to comment before we vote?
Mayor, this is Julie. Hi, thank you. I just wanted to state for the record, in the past, when this was taken up back in October of 2021, the direction to council was that an ordinance should go through legal for review and for drafting. And at that time, it was the direction to council that they should pass an eight-hour rule to direct council, or to direct the Law Department to draft the ordinance, which is also consistent with city code. City rules of procedure are that you pass an eight-hour rule in order to give the Law Department a chance to draft an ordinance and do the legal review, do conflict checked with other provisions in the code. That has not been done in this case, and so I wanted to just put on the record that there might be some legal issues with how this was drafted and with the format. Thank you.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Could I add one?
Never mind.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So when we were doing the 24-hour permitting that I was working on, I think Deb remembers this, too, it was myself and two others that drafted the ordinance that we ended up using. So a lot of that language was, and David Cavasos even turned to me and asked me to help write it. So just so you know, there is precedent here where, you know, I think probably close to 10 years ago, I helped write my own ordinance when it came to that permitting process. So we do have some history on that. Thank you, Mayor.
And did you ask your colleagues, did you ask your colleagues to vote on it with, I don't know, six minutes' notice?
Well, everything's done differently, isn't it? I mean, this one here, I think it's very clear. It's very clean, Mayor. I'm good with this. I mean, it's very targeted, and it goes after these corporate giveaways anyway. So I don't have any issues at all with us being able to target those kinds of entities or those kinds of programs that we have here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
That's okay. I'll make my comments when we vote.
All right. Would anyone like to comment before we vote?
Can I ask a clarifying question, just to make sure that I understand what we're voting on? So, Councilwoman Guardado, I'm looking at your current language, and I hear what Councilman DeCecio is saying. And he's saying that it only applies to giplits, but when I read this, it says, "means every worker, mechanic, or other laborer employed by any contractor or subcontractor in the work of construction, alteration, improvement, repair, maintenance, or demolition on any city-owned or leased building, on any city-owned land, including building subject to a giplit lease development agreement executed by the city after December 31st, 2023, or pursuant to a contract in excess of $250,000." So when I read that, it sounds to me like it covers more than just giplit. Almost on every city contract that we have that has to do with services or construction. Am I misinterpreting that, or am I reading that correctly?
But I think it also says on the bottom what we are excluding.
You're excluding development agreements, public infrastructure reimbursements, giplit. So I mean, again, to me, I'm reading this, it still applies to all city projects for the most part. Like it would apply to our bond program, it would apply to the operating budget projects that we've got. Just, I'm just trying to clarify, because in my head last night, I stood up and tried to figure this out, the financial impact. And it's a pretty big number, if I kind of follow the same methodology that was used back in 2021 when you guys looked at this. It's a pretty big number that's not included in the trial budget. It's not included nor accounted for in the bond program. I just want to make sure that we're all understanding that.
Yeah, I think we understand, but then I think we also understand the stuff that we are also excluding on the next, after, on the next four bullet points.
I still don't, I don't think that applies to just, I think, I get what you're saying, but I still think there's an impact in the operating budget. I'll give you an example. So using the methodology that Eric used last year when he provided this information to you, I just went through the operating budget for 2023. There's over $1.2 billion worth of contractual spend that falls into service categories. Now, not all of that would probably constitute being a service-based thing that would be subject to this ordinance, but even if you said 50% of it and you applied that 10% prevailing wage factor that Eric used, I think, which is in the range that Mr., I forget what your name is, I'm sorry, referenced. If I use 10% of that and took it against that 50% of that $1.2 billion, you're talking about a $60 million impact to the operating budget.
Sorry. And what we're seeing here that all city projects...
Mayor, could I answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me answer that if you don't mind. Let me get to it. So what you have here, Jeff, is you have the language that you just read, okay? But you need to go to 4352 where we talk about subsidies, because it involves a subsidy, okay, from government. And so subsidy means government property lease excise tax agreements, also known as giplits. This ordinance shall not apply to any development agreement between the city and a developer that does not provide for a giplit lease or that was executed on the city before December 31st, 23, 20, yeah, 2023. So I think that's pretty clear right there, that what this is saying is geared toward, Jeff.
No, I understand.
And most of those, a lot of those...
I understand that, Councilman. I guess what I'm trying to...
A lot of those, go ahead, Mayor. Go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I understand that. I guess where I'm concerned is that, speaking specifically to giplit and subsidies, I'm saying that we have a lot of contractual spending that is not related to either, that we spend on an annual basis that would be subject to this, that we did not account for in the operating budget, is what I'm saying.
So maybe the construction... So many of the construction projects that we do here, Jeff, just so, I mean, from my end of it, a lot of those involve some federal dollars where you have to pay prevailing wages anyway. So from my end of it, I think it, go ahead.
And Councilman, I kind of ran both of those scenarios last night and I can kind of quote them to you off of my head. So looking at the CIP that we just talked to you about yesterday, it's eight point four billion dollars. Annually, we spend about one point six. If I then take roughly 25% of that as being, you know, the 20% of that roughly being federal dollars, which is what Eric used last year because of some of the federal contracts and federal grants that we get, that leaves me with about one point, you know, one point three. If I apply then that, there's 25% of that is really staff costs, then I apply 10% factor to that, I come up with about $33 million in the CIP impact. If I apply that same logic to that 1.2 billion that I'm talking about that's in the operating, it's 60 million. So if I add those two together, we're talking about $93 million of potential impact. Just a swag.
So to be clear on this then too, so if I can speak, you know, for Mr. Guardado on just this one point that you, and the question that you asked, Jeff, just to be on the record, it does apply to any contract that were awarded, that are awarded on any city-owned, I'm just going through it right here, that are awarded on any city-owned land or maintenance repairs, alterations in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it does apply to that. So I'm just being very clear with you that it does do that.
Yeah, and that's what my concern is because we didn't account for that in the current Or the bond program, or the water rates that we've been talking about.
Jeff, I'm good with this, you know? I'm good with it. I think that it's, coming here, it doesn't impact the private sector at all. What it does is it impacts us, yes. And a majority of our contracts are federal anyways that I see, at least. And a lot of those require prevailing wages anyways. So I'm, I'm good with this, with this ordinance, Mayor.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak before we-
Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Mayor? Thank you.
Councilwoman O'Brien?
Thank you so much. So Jeff, I just want to make sure I have the numbers correct. Rough estimate is a $60 million to the current budget? And then what was the number for, to our CIP?
So again, it's just a rough, it's a rough approximation. The assumptions could be wrong. I'm just using the same methodology that was used last time you guys addressed this. I wasn't involved in the conversation before, but again, just being the former budget director and wanting to understand as we're developing a budget and agreeing to labor contracts, I went through this last night and just ran the numbers. So in the operating budget, the day-to-day budget that provides for all services, we've got about 1.2 billion dollars worth of contracts. Now again, I acknowledge that not all of those contracts would be subject to this because some of them are for electricity, water and all that. So if I threw 50% of it out and just assumed that 50% would be subject to this, that would leave me with 600 million. Those, none of those have federal funding on them. Those are just straight operating costs. So those aren't subject to the federal funding. So I would then apply that factor and I come up with about a, with about a $60 million hit to the operating budget. Applying that same logic to the CIP, the CIP is different. There's about 20% on average that would be federally funded. If I apply that and then apply these other factors, basically assuming how much of it's labor versus materials of about 25%, and then apply the 10% prevailing wage lift to it, which is within the range of six to 30 that you heard quoted earlier, we have about a $33 million hit to the capital improvement program that was produced and presented to you yesterday.
And do you have any estimations on what would happen to our bond program?
The bond program at about 500 million, no federal funds, take probably 12 and a half million.
Okay. I cannot support something that is, with such short notice and without stakeholder input and without the financial impact, the financial impact would, will not be good for our city budget this year. So I will not be supporting this.
Question for Councilwoman Guardado, could you define what you mean by affordable housing projects?
I think it defines on its own affordable housing. I think we all know what affordable housing is.
So it has to be 100% affordable housing? If it's 50% affordable housing, does it count? 10% does it count?
It depends, whatever affordable housing is, that's what it is.
It basically excludes all residential.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Mayor, may I?
All right. Anyone like to comment? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Oh, sorry, it's Lori.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add also, just for informational purposes, this may also impact the implementation of our labor contracts in class and comp study as this is a significant dollar amount that would need to be found somewhere and that's the primary place where our current surplus is going. So I just wanted to point that out as that would be a concern.
Okay. Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Mayor, may I extend my vote?
Please do.
I'll be voting yes on this and for Jeff and Lori, there is no proof or data that shows that this will raise the cost. I don't appreciate that assumption or numbers. You are a very smart person, Jeff. I really appreciate you, but I don't think there's any data or anything that's based on, on any reality that there's that out there, that those increases are going to happen. So I'm proud to support this and even if that was the case, Jeff, then I would be really extremely disappointed that we underpay folks that work with the city that much. So I am a yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
No.
Pastore?
I will explain my vote, but I am a yes. Appreciate the employee's comments, but we're here to lead and I believe that workers should be paid what they should be paid, especially in this industry. So thank you.
Stark?
No.
Waring?
No.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Gallego?
No.
Passes five-four.
That concludes tonight's special meeting.
Internet service providers will be using this technology that we're putting in the ground so that they can provide a service to the public. A really unique element of this is there will be a smart highway trust fund. And so the user-